Colors, colors. Red, red, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut, pose, forward, march. Colors, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut, pose, forward, march. Colors, colors. Left, face, red, red, arms. Pose the colors. Ready, two, four, arms, up, bow, face, forward, march. Colors, colors. Order, arms, right, face, face, march.
Good evening. My name is Lionel Orkada. I'm a Colonel in the United States Marine Corps. I'm also the Senior Naval Science Instructor at Allen High School. And I wanted to thank the representatives, President Brabham, the rest of the board for allowing us to represent our school, Akron Public Schools, throughout the summer at each of the board meetings. We do appreciate it. I also wanted to express my thanks to our Principal, Mrs. Kearns, and the rest of the staff at Allen High School who have been very supportive of the program and couldn't ask for a better school to be assigned to. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the Naval Science Instructor to introduce himself and introduce the guests.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, for Pledge of Allegiance, we know you. I want to give a shout out to the United States Army Special Shout Out to Cadet Harris, senior this year. This is her 17th board meeting that she's done. Since her freshman year, she's only missed one, and that was when she was signing in for the United States Army of the National Defense Department one time. When you leave, Cadet Harris?
Uh, general.
And your job is going to be what?
Uh, Patriot Missile Officer.
Alright, so, Mr. and I'll try to front there, please.
I'm Cadet Cheatham. I'm a junior at Allen High School. My job is the Mailbox.
I'm Cadet Harris. I'm a senior at Allen High School. This is my fourth year in the program, and I'm the Executive Officer.
I'm Cadet Towns. I'm a junior, I'm a third year, and I'm Cadet Public Security.
I'm Cadet Hardy. I am a junior at Allen High School, and I'm the Air Ride Team Commander.
I am Cadet Clifton. I'm a second year. I'm a sophomore, and I'm Assistant Squad.
I'm Cadet Attic Card. I'm a sophomore, and this is my second year.
I'm Cadet Dr. John. I'm a second year, and I'm Assistant Squad.
I'm Cadet Lucas Gardner. This is my second year in the program, and I'm a senior.
Ready, cut, face, forward, march.
Thank you, Sir Geerco. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Alright, what a perfect way to start the night. Community and school reflections, if anyone would like to. Sure, I'll start. Been a busy couple of weeks. A couple of different things I did worth mentioning, though. I went to continue the conversation on race at the Akron Urban League, and we had talked about strategies for difficult conversations and understanding cross-cultural conflict. Mouthful, but they continue to be very interesting and eye-opening conversations, and unfortunately, I will not make the September one, but hope to continue those going on. Went to the Akron Roundtable, and they had Jim Donovan speak, and of particular interest in this setting anyways, he talked about his struggle with leukemia, and talked about different highs and lows going through that, but I think it's a good conversation as we have our community discussion on our students and lesson in resiliency, what he had to go through and what he had to bounce back from. It was very interesting. We said goodbye to Rotania this week, this past week, the statue in front of Fair Lawn or Judith Resnick's CLC. Came down in as best a condition as we could have hoped for. From what I could tell in photos, it sort of looks like a mask now. It's sort of hollowed out on the inside, but the face pretty much survived. So we continue to look for a home for that piece of artwork. There's some discussion about maybe a replacement statue. That's in its infancy, though, but I think we'll continue that conversation. And I think I'll talk about the portrait of a graduate when we get to whole business later, so that's all I have for this part of time.
Well, we all attended the ribbon cutting for Case Elementary School, and that was a very, very heartwarming occasion as the school is just, it looks fabulous. I mean, a few of us went early on. I think it was Superintendent Patrick, Lisa, myself. Went before all of this was completed, so to see the actual school totally completed and to be able to engage with some of the parents and other students that were in attendance was really a very enlightening experience. So that, and Reverend Walker and myself were able to go to the LeBron James event at Cedar Point. So that was fun. It was fun, and I mean, it was just good to see all the families there, represented, the camaraderie, the excitement, our children. I mean, everything was just very well done, and not to mention, the food was pretty good. So that was good, because usually if you go and there's big crowds and you have to feed them, something gets lost in the process, but it wasn't. But I mean, the chicken nuggets were great. I don't even eat chicken nuggets, but they were so good. So I had a couple helpies of that. But the entertainment, and then LeBron came later on to address the children, and they were able to see him, you know, before he left to go back. He probably came from California with that. So it was a very nice family occasion. Oh, Assistant Superintendent Ellen McWilliams was there, awesome. Who else was there? Carla, Zebly, who else am I missing? And Mary. I didn't see Mary, though. Where were you?
I was in the back.
So we were all there somewhere. Everybody was doing their own thing, and then we came together at the end of the evening for the presentation with LeBron and his mom. She came out and did her thing, so it was really nice. That was the first time I had experienced that event, so it was good. I look forward to going next year. What else? It's so hard in two weeks, you know. It's like so many things go on, and I just really lose track of it if I don't write it down right away. So those are the two things that just kind of stuck right there that I can communicate now, so that's it for me.
Couple of things. We, I know one thing you did. We were at the Summit for Kids Breakfast together, and I didn't know this was going to happen, and I got really emotional. I didn't know that one of our students was the winner for the Russ Pry Award, Syrup for Service for Youth, and it was Lourdes Montez, and we call her Lulu. And she has been just a huge part of our student engagement ad hoc committee, as well as she worked on the senior summit that I did last year for the Pro Bay Court. I, of course, was a blubbery math, as usual, but I was so proud of her. I did get to meet her dad and her young boyfriend, and they were incredibly proud of her. And so just huge kudos to Lulu for all the work that she does in the community. It wasn't even for those things that I just mentioned, that she was recognized. It was for her work with Hispanic organization. I can't remember what it's called right now, but she is such a fantastic representative of Akron Public Schools. I also wanted to give a shout out to all the students that I saw at Akron Pride on Saturday, particularly those who were volunteering. It was just incredibly heartwarming to see them in those really bright, colorful, they were kind of fluorescent peach shirts, but to see them, and they didn't care what duty was assigned. The girls that I got to take pictures of were helping sort the trash to make sure that it was as close to zero waste as possible. So, you know, that's when you know that you're in it for the right reasons. When you don't care and there's no glory in that, that's just a lot of work. And so just a huge shout out to them, because that was, our kids do amazing things. 365, not just during the school year, not just at school, but they do it in their churches. They do it in their community, and it just needs to be shouted a little bit more.
Yeah, it was, I know it was over a thousand people there. It had to be. And there's always parents who are, you know, asking questions about, you know, what's going on with Akron Public Schools and I Promise School and different things like that. But it is such a festive event, and there's so many people that are in attendance that really need to talk to, you know, some of us. So I would encourage those that have not participated in that to just try and go sometime, because if we go even as a group, we could send a message, you know, just as board members, that we're here to hear you, you know, and we're available.
I'll go real quick. I think a lot of the events I was going to talk about were already mentioned, but I will, as I said, anecdotally to the Case ribbon cutting. A friend recently moved here from Portland, and she moved into the Case district. I think I might have shared this with a couple of folks, but she went to the opening, and she and her husband and family have been talking a lot about what school to send their two kids to. And after the opening, I saw her leaving, and I like chased her to the house. She said, "You know, we just decided today we're sending our kids to Case." That was awesome. APS is awesome. It was a really cool moment after talking to her for, you know, several months about how it's a decision that she and her family were really wrestling with. So very, very cool, and props to the whole team that presented the case, it was really fantastic. And also, Lulu, that was so cool, so cool. And also wanted to mention, we went to the Access Breakfast, a handful of amazing organizations supporting and empowering women and children who are dealing with homelessness. And there was a speaker there, and we kind of made eye contact at one point. How did we get into friends' students? It was so, it was fantastic, talking about self-esteem and self-confidence, and how much that can manifest into other things in your life. And then last, just to say thank you for everybody involved in the back-to-school stuff. It's just, I did not understand the amount of things involved in that process, so thank you all, and I also very much appreciate being here today. I'm sure there are comfortable chairs at your house that you would also like to sit in during a couple of weeks like this, so thank you.
I think everyone has mentioned the things that I've participated in, so.
Yeah, me too. So I'll keep it short. I really enjoyed the Case grand opening. We're up to 34 now, CLCs, that's amazing. We've definitely come a long way, and I know we're at the tail end of that project. That school was particularly fun, because when we were deciding as a family where we were going to enroll, we were, and we live in the Case, the Firestone Cluster, in Case Elementary, and we toured the previous school, and that's not exactly, was not exactly one on the list that if you were going to take kids around in that old sort of pinky yellow, I mean, just not the most, not the shiniest apple in the bunch that you want to show up. And we still decided on Case, because that was another example where it just kind of goes to show that the people in the building and the programs that are there make all the difference in the world. But to open that school, having been the elementary that Aiden went to, was kind of special, so that was a lot of fun. So thank you to everyone involved in that. I know that's a lot of work. Also went to the Rotania, and just want to give many thanks to Tim and to Treasurer, Mr. Pendleton, and to Superintendent for coordinating such a nice event. It was really well-attended, I thought, especially for sort of a decommissioning-type ceremony where you're kind of saying goodbye to what a lot of people feel is an iconic piece of Akron for at least the last 33 years. So I thought it was really well-attended. The media was there, and got to spend some time with folks who care a lot about Rotania and the whole Trail of Whispering Tears art installation, if you will. So I thought that was nice. Jim Ott was there, I think, felt good and felt that we paid the proper amount of respect to something so important. So I thought it was really well-done, and just wanted to say thank you to Tim and David and Ryan for all the work that you did on that, and Deborah, yes, Deborah was there, making sure all of the things were taken care of that day, so, any in order. I missed the blessing at the beginning, but I heard that was quite good, so. And just, you know, over the last couple of weeks, too, I just wanted to say, you know, we created a couple of ad hoc committees this year, dealing with student engagement, dealing with Portrait of a Student and what that looks like in terms of school safety and discipline. And I've just seen all of the work that's gone into those, and I want to say thank you to both of you, since both of those committees attended the meeting on Friday. I'll tell you what, those students are just, I mean, you wouldn't know they were high school students if you didn't see them sitting in front of you. They're so smart, and they're so engaged, and they come with such great ideas, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
And keep us on track.
And keep us on track. And they're not shy. They're not afraid to tell you what they think and how they feel about something, and, I mean, just all kinds. We had good discussions on diversity and inclusion and what that looks like on this, you know, for what comes out of this committee, and actually, it was all really good. So I just wanted to say thank you all for your extra work on those. And that's it for me.
I wanted to mention, too, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I went to the Urban League, their gala, or their event, and at the event, it was very interesting, because they had something that portrayed like hidden figures with women who were in engineering fields, and they were giving awards to these women in the community. There were maybe about six of them that received awards. And they also have, I guess, an after-school program where some of our children attend, and some of the, I want to say, some of the, the impact, some of the impact that they're having towards our children who are in attendance is phenomenal in a short period of time. So I don't really know much about what is included in that program and how they're coming about with these fantastic changes that were communicated, but I want to find out and see what it is that they're really doing over there to drive such changes. But it was very interesting and very enlightening. I had no idea this was going on, so, but it was nice to see some of the women who don't ordinarily get the limelight, you know, to step out there and be appreciated for what they bring to the table each and every day, and have been for several years. These women, they have been out there doing the work for several years. So it was just good to see someone getting recognized for their work.
Thank you. We have no request to address the board. We do have, under Communications and Recognitions, first, some representatives here from Summit County Children's Services, and I want to turn it over to Molly Knight and her team to talk about the 2018 Children's Services Levy.
Hello. I wanted to thank everybody in the room for letting us speak to the board and to all the people here today. My name is Molly Knight. I'm the Levy Campaign Coordinator for the Citizens Committee for Children's Services. As you know, we are about to sign pass our 2018 levy, which is a 2.25 renewal with a $1 million increase, and your support is incredibly vital to our ability to pass this levy this year.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Finney. I'm here representing the Citizens Committee for Children's Services as well. I am one of the Legal Counsel for Children's Services. And I'd like to just tell you a little bit about why this levy is going to be so crucial for us this year. As Molly said, we are going on the ballot as a 2.25 renewal with a $1 mil increase. That will be one ballot number, so you're not going to see two different numbers. You will see it just as one with that language, as a renewal. Most importantly, what people ask is, "How much is that going to cost me?" I can tell you that some really smart people did some math, and it wasn't me, so it's accurate. And for the average homeowner of $100,000, it's going to cost you $35 a year. So that would be about 10 cents a day. So if you think about it, it's not a whole lot. You know, 10 cents can get you a whole lot when you think about it and add it to us. I can tell you why this is so important. So we have not had a levy increase in 30 years. And so to give you a perspective on that, I'm 29 years old, so in my lifetime, there has not been a levy increase for Children's Services. Our revenue has actually gone down by about $8 million, I believe, and so we really need this increase. If we do not get this increase, our services are going to be cut to the community by 20%, which I'm sure you all know, you see it every day. The children that we work with need every penny of support that we can give them, and so the 20% is really going to be crucial for us to help continuing to provide not only the services we're giving them now, but to hopefully provide more services to them. Last year in 2017, 1 in 12 children in Summit County had services through the agency. As of this morning, we had 745 children in our custody. And I can tell you that number went up, because I did some filings today. So we're probably, you know, closer to 750 children. And that's just children in our custody. It doesn't include children who we're working with through protective supervision. It does not include children who we've been able to place in temporary custody to relatives. So we're probably total, you know, 1,000 to 1,100 children currently that we're working with. So your guys' support and your endorsement is going to be crucial to helping us pass this levy. Everyone keeps asking about yard signs, which is great, and to get one of those, you can go to supportsummitkids.org. We do have a button at the bottom to receive yard signs, donations, to volunteer. We also have a Facebook page that you can go and like, and that gives a list of our events as well. And I really like to be able to allow you guys to ask some questions. I know that was quick, and a lot of information thrown at you. I believe Ms. Pichelle passed out our tip card as well, which has a lot of that really good information on it.
As you consider your questions, we do have a resolution that will ask for a motion for tonight supporting Children's Services and their efforts to pass the levy. It's on SharePoint, but I'll go ahead and read it before you would ask for that motion. And I will just say, just to kick it off, you know, we appreciate you coming in today. I know that the work that you do is critical, and I know that it's important to the safety of even many of our children, and so thank you for what you do. And personally, having been a foster parent for Summit County Children's Services, I've seen your work firsthand and appreciate the effort that goes into it, and so I'm going to open it for questions, if anybody has any.
Another question. I just wanted to also say thank you, and that your children are our children, and so, and vice versa. So thank you for what you do. We actually had adoption in Pro Bay Court today of some children that have been in the system, and the love and care and detail that goes into every child, as Patrick in Test Two as well. And I've been a volunteer with the agency going back also, and it's just, it warms my heart, and to me, it's a no-brainer, so thank you for coming to ask, but it's a no-brainer.
Thank you. We really appreciate your support. Like I said, every vote's going to help, every support that we can get is going to help, you know, these children, like you said, are your children as well. So, you know, you guys see firsthand how badly the community needs the support and the help, you know, especially with the opioid epidemic that the county has gone through in the last few years. You know, you'll see children as silent victims, and they absolutely are. I mean, these children are suffering, and anything we can do to help them and provide them those extra services, we'd love to do, continue to do.
We really appreciate, obviously, having the Akron Public Schools Board of Education as an endorsement is going to be huge for us. So go to Support Summit Kids Out of Work, volunteer, get a yard sign. I'll be on the other end of that email, and I'll probably be giving you a call.
Again, just to commend you on the work that you do, have family members who look forward to Children's Services. Former Director was a member of my congregation, Mr. Joseph White. So all very much aware of the work that Children's Services has done, not just recently, but it's a long history relationship, particularly in the religious community as well. So thank you for your collaboration, not only with the school board, but with faith-based community as well, for the work that you do.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would like to read the resolution, if that's okay. Whereas in November 2018, the Summit County Children's Services Board will place a 2.25 mil renewal levy and an increase of $1 mil on the ballot for voter approval. And whereas the Summit County Children's Services Board provides protection and placement of abused and neglected children, and whereas Summit County Children, the families benefit from the services provided through the Summit County Children's Services Board. And whereas the Board of Education of the Akron School District believes the Summit County Children's Services Board manages its resources well, and that the passage of the levy will further positive changes and help strengthen Akron families. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District. Section 1, the Board of Education of the Akron City School District supports the Summit County Children's Services Board as a crucial community partner in providing services that support youth in achieving their highest potential and facilitating lifelong learning. And Section 2, that the Board of Education of the Akron City School District hereby invests in the children and families of Akron by endorsing the Summit County Children's Services Levy and authorizes the Summit County Children's Services Support Committee and the Summit County Children's Services Board to use the name of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District for general publicity purposes related to the levy campaign, and specifically includes permission to place yard signs at all Akron Public School locations. This is a resolution supporting the Summit County Children's Services 2018 levy campaign. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Brabham?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. And now, a presentation on technology from Mr. Howard Lawson.
But that's kind of harmless, I guess. And I kind of thought that it would stay up because we timed it. I left it nine minutes and it quit at 10:00. So, I thought that would be a nice way to have it there, which didn't look like that. So, at any rate, today, I'm going to stand before you and talk about technology, but it is not me. It's hundreds of people's work, okay? I've got to tell you that. It's not just 1, 2, 5 or small department. It's everybody that's sitting around the perimeter of this room, every person. Deb Foal, Karen Gijin, Tomiko, Ellen, you know them all, all around the room, because we've all collaborated together to get this, to meet David's vision of technology in the classroom, in the, for the Akron Public Schools for All Children, so they can increase their learning to 24/7, 7 days a week. I have to take just a second. I hope this thing's working the way I want it to. Yeah. We obviously, you've seen this chart many times, with the foundation down here, along with H Human Resources trying to find our best teachers, instructors, everybody, and the financial department to make sure we're stable. It's a small little sliver there, but without that foundation, I think it would, you'll find that everybody in the room will tell you that it's probably impossible to accomplish all those goals. So, I'm going to talk a lot about the foundation here today, except today, I'm going to start really in the classroom. And I want to give you a synopsis here. This is David's vision, already said that. It called together hundreds of people to try and put together a plan that over four years, we have been able to implement. We now have all staff with a device, basically a Chromebook, but the device to do the needs of their job. Some of them require a laptop because of the type of program they have. All of them have what they need. And these are full-time teachers. The next thing here, we have all students 3 through 12 have a device right now in their school, right now, a day, and a bag to take it home so that they can walk it home, do their work, and then come back to school with it. I think that all of what we're doing with our K2 devices at this point is that all of them have a cart in their room. Every classroom, K through 2, has a cart in the room filled with the devices that they need to implement instruction and support technology and the digital curriculum that you have right now. We have many online professional development stuff for staff as well as for students. And I'm a little ahead of myself, but that's okay. It is really a, when you have digital content, like the social studies that you adopted in May, that doesn't have a textbook, all the way to the ones we started with our English adoption, I think, what, three years ago. We have some 65 different programs that we support, and all of them need the network to operate, okay? So, I'm going to go from there to the network. And then, the network has 30 terabytes of data now on Google servers. That's 3 trillion bytes of information. And the key to that puppy is that they're on a Google server, they're not on mine. I don't have to pay for them. The transition that David let us down saves us a ton of money because we now don't have to store this information. And Rhonda will tell you that it's very, very, it's very useful when we have to try and retrieve data for a variety of reasons. We have 52,000 devices connected to the network at any one moment in the day, okay? Typically, it's between 8:00 and 10:30, that's the largest number. And our school bandwidth, because if you have the devices connected to it, you have to increase your bandwidth. And through the assistance of Deb Foal, we've been able to do that. We've actually doubled the bandwidth for every school this fall in anticipating, in anticipation of even more increased use of the technology in the building. We have a new cloud-based portal, which is really pretty slick because it has allowed us a great deal more security than what we once had in our portal. And how do we monitor all this stuff? We've had to try and create dashboards. This is kind of a neat little map, right? I really love it because you see all these green things? This sits in our office and the dashboard right now, all those green things means that those schools' network is up. It's connected. As soon as it goes red, like, there's a triage that starts. And, all right, you know all those schools, but all of you also know that we are working at Blue Bridge, right? Because it's our connection in Cleveland? Well, there it is, right there. There's Blue Bridge. There's our Blue Bridge connection. All the green little dots mean that they're up and running. And this is one of about four monitors, dashboard-type things that we have to try and monitor our network each and every day, each and every hour, really. Okay, so now we have all those devices, so what do we do with them? Well, we've got 41,000 devices. We have 35,000 tickets to repair the devices, to help me figure out how to connect to the internet, or whatever teacher problem that might happen. Something needs assistance, that, there's been 35, whoops, whoops. Go back there, buddy. It doesn't like it. There you go. Okay? Downstairs, we've, and Kevin Herrick is the one that's worked on this one the most. He's the head of it, let me say it that way. And we have 5,000 devices that we've actually repaired through a variety of methods of cannibalizing things that have been broken or whatever. So, how do you keep track of all that stuff? Is we wound up coming up with another dashboard that Kevin is using that will tell us how many Chromebooks, pieces, and parts that have been missing. And we use this, we put it in potential dollars of what it's cost us to do some things. We have it by the building, and we can search it by the biggest problem. What's the biggest problem? One of the biggest problems we discovered at the end of one year is that, because we had the bags, and a lot of the kids wanted to stuff the electric plug in the bag between the monitor and the keyboard. It breaks the keyboard, it breaks the monitor, it breaks the screen. So, we wound up trying to look at different type of purchase in the future. We'll admit a hard thing, a hard back thing, so it's on both sides of the Chromebook, and they can throw it in their backpack, as opposed to having a pack in itself. It also, it'll save us a great deal of other time, too, in a variety of ways. All right, sure. All right. Data services. It's another arm of the department downstairs. And it really is, Lucy Wine does a whole lot of the work along the lines of G-School and that type of thing. And Chuck really does a lot of the EMIS, Munis kind of operations, along with the collaboration with, obviously, can't do any of this without financing, HR chiming in. So, they have single-class rosters. That sounds simple. These five bullets, but it's not really easy. Let me tell you what, there's some kind of work to be done. We have data integration with our educational partners, the integration of the human resource projects and business finance projects. I'll just kind of show you a little bit of that in a minute. And I've already talked about the 65 different levels of software packages that are integrated with the curriculum development. And again, in order to do that, we try to design something that we can kind of see what everybody's doing, the work. What is the work? This is a summary table that we use downstairs about the work. And I'll point out just a couple of things. We designed something that we call the Sprint. Cool. High-tech, not. We designed something called the Sprint where we turn around, and this one ended Friday, okay? And this is trying to lay out the work for the people in the department for the two-week period of time, okay? And why do we have to worry about that? We worry about that. We worry about that. You know what? I must stick with this. Maybe. We worry about that because we have a lot of updating to do. In the Power School software, this school year alone, we anticipate that we are going to have to, we're going to put in play because of the center that we're putting in at Ten North Main, right? The Service Center for Customer Service Relations Center. We are going to put in a school choice module. We're going to put in an online registration model for parents. We have, we've got hack information that's going to be increased or improved so parents can see more of what's going on in the school itself. We anticipate that there'll be some type of an assessment package brought on by next fall, as well as a special education package that needs to be upgraded. And all of that work has got to be scheduled. And in our Munis piece, we have to take a look at, I believe by Thanksgiving is our goal, that we will have the newest version of Munis up and running. And we just, we figured that that is going to allow us to improve workflow and to reduce errors because we'll be able to, through the workflow, we'll be able to increase the amount of information that our staff will actually be able to put in. One other thing we wound up doing, I'll show you this real quick. The board docs, do you, this, Mary Perkins and Ron Porter, you can thank them. You know, this has been kind of a challenge to, where'd it go?
Board thinking that.
It's coming.
Where are you going?
Oh, wait a second. District. District. Somebody put in a link for me. Didn't work. Board of Education, here, you got, here your folks are. Here's your board policy. Okay? The, let's go over here to the administration and say, if you want to take a look at conflict of interest, here's the piece. Remember how difficult it was sometimes to actually get it to print? So, we go up here and you get to print, and down here, I say, okay, I want it printed out for me. And this is what they're going to see. Load, please. Interesting here, it gives you the day that this policy was actually adopted by the board, and this was January of 2006. Its last revision was January 27, 2018, and that'll be all printed off pretty doggone nice for anybody. And that, I think, was just last week, I think, we were able to put that together. And I thought I'd show that to you.
Did we do the full license for board docs?
Neola switched over to, we had Neola, but Neola actually switched over to board docs, so we didn't have to enter into agreement.
In order to maintain all of this, what we've wound up doing is, here's my staff over here, our programming staff on this side. Here's their assignment for the week, okay? This one, and then over here, these are what we expect them to do in the next sprint, okay, which started today. So, that's how we try and monitor what's going on, and that's why it's important that a lot of the staff puts things in, in tickets, and that's how we can move forward with trying to manage our time. Digital training is really kind of huge because you can imagine, all of our teachers in the buildings, they really need just-in-time training. Something's not right in their building or in their classroom with the monitor, with the connectivity, or some of the things you saw me do, airbrushed, they've got, typically, they have somebody in the building every day. The high schools and middle schools have someone all the time. The elementary share a, what we call a technology support specialist. We try and work with our itinerant secretaries to increase data automation and also to, we have a software program that if there's some things that are supposed to be in a registration, if they miss it, we, 24 hours later, they get an email from us saying, hey, listen, you've got to take a look at this. One of the interesting pieces that we're trying to work with now is that they have to have a birth country in every one of our new enrollees. It's often missed. And we need the birth country in order for us to get an SSID, and we have to have those within 15 days because we have to test them electronically. So, it's really imperative that they get some real training and that type of stuff. So, we have that. Our website, you folks have seen some of the benefits to the website. I think I just flipped through it real quick for you, and it really, I think, has improved over the past six months. We also designed a way to monitor what our TSSs are doing here. Really, we monitor about four things. They are actively doing their own PD. We actively have them working 101 mostly with staff in their PD. There's a certain amount of break and fix, you know, the quick fix thing, you forgot to plug it in the wall type of thing. That's one of their first line of defense. And also, they've, on their own, established goals that they would like to get done, one goal that they'd like to accomplish. So, this is the way we kind of track them. And down here, you can see the different people's names, too, so that, you know, if we wanted to pull something out for them, we could actually go click on it, okay? So, that's how we try to design a way to monitor that. And why do we do all this? One, this is an interesting one. Can you believe we administered 459, 556 online tests last school year? I'll give you the rundown. Gaps in exams, 257,000, I'm rounding these off, 257,000. Math, 115,000. Ohio State test, 74, 75,000. Web exam, 6,000. Code Guard, 3,000. Ink, O, O, O.
OALPA.
Hellmeyer!
OALPA.
OALPA, thank you. I can't get those in. About 2,000. Work keys, 450, for a total of 559. Tech didn't do that. Tech supported school improvement department, teaching and learning, school buildings. And altogether, we got that accomplished. And that's hundreds of people really working on that. That's not us. It's us trying to make sure that the connections were available through our network to accomplish this. And with that, I'm going to thank you for, I'm going to move quickly to Ten North Main. Ten North Main, we're so excited we can't really stand it. Today, you get an opportunity to look at. Listen, I'm going to say 19 out of 20 down pieces of our network being down, 19 out of 20 have been because somebody hit a pole, some squirrel fell into a transformer, some catastrophe from God happened which brought us down, which will never happen at Ten North Main. That's how excited I am about it, okay? Last year, around, I think we were doing testing, as a matter of fact, and one of the trucks out there dug up our fiber line and ripped it in half. I mean, we can't do anything about that. At Ten North Main, short of somebody digging up a fiber line, we will be able to make sure that we are much more responsive. We already have in the building, thanks to Paul Doxy and the work that he's doing and their consultation with the architects and their approval, we already have our AT&amp;T line and our ORNET line, fiber lines in the building. They're sitting there waiting for us. Today, you're going to be looking at, I think, in our financial piece of Deb Foal, you're going to be looking at some approvals we're looking for so that we can set up the data room, so we can buy the servers and equipment. And by buying the servers and equipment, we're going to be able to shrink our transition from, cutting over from this building to that building, from one to two weeks to two days.
Wow.
Because of all of the pre-work we can do here while we're still connected. And then just pick up the box and walk it over there and plug it in. We believe we can get it done in two days. And it's not only our belief, we've got a consultant that's helped us, several consultants that helped us in the look at the plan and said, yes, that will happen. You have phones and internet systems. Now, I got the phones because we don't have any phones anymore. We've got things that look like that rotary dial thing that went at home or that push-button, they're all computers. They all age out after four or five years. You're going to have to replace them again. So, all many computers is sitting on everybody's desk. But we will be able to reuse the pieces of equipment, the phones that we have in this building and other buildings until their end-of-life expectancy happens. And you're going to, we're going to be purchasing the wireless devices that we need to make sure. You have phones and internet systems. Now, I got the phones because we don't have any phones anymore. We've got things that look like that lottery dial thing that went at home or that push button, they're all computers. They all age out after four or five years, you're going to have to replace them again. So all many computers is sitting on everybody's desk. But we will be able to reuse the pieces of equipment, the phones that we have in this building and other buildings until their end-of-life expectancy happens. And you're going to, we're going to be purchasing the wireless devices that we need to make sure that we have the connectivity everywhere in the building that we, that we need, okay? And that's especially going to be important as we migrate to the PD floor on the second floor. It's got to be just, so we're really excited about it. With that, I can shut it off, I guess. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Every, the students have the phone books. I see them or I saw them the other day on their back, taking them from the school building. How do we follow the usage? How do we keep track that they're being used, they're being affected, issue, and what we want them to do? Are we tracking that?
There's a couple ways. Number one, through David's, we recently had a survey last year that was put together by Hanover, which gives us a baseline of usage, okay? So we have that. We also have the portal, one of its new features that I, you can't roll everything out at the same minute, but one of the new features in the portal is we're hoping that we'll be able to monitor the software packages that we have on the portal to make sure of usage. Another one of the interesting pieces in the portal that we have is not only can we monitor its usage, but we can also set aside by building the software package that building wants their staff to use. So as an example, Hire, you could put a Hire tab out there, where the titles are at right now, you can have a Hire tab. You click on the Hire tab, you put all of the little software packages we want them to use, so that we can monitor what's going on. And each of the digital software packages have the ability to export data to us, so we know how the children, young people, are doing on various benchmark tests that we have set up in the computer. Remember, I think I said it was how many DAPs and online exam type things we had, which was by far the majority, I think it was almost a quarter of a million? That's how we're trying to monitor that stuff.
So as a Gen X who struggles mightily and has kept up my head above water fairly well, I would love if the board could have a day, maybe a Saturday, that we get just something brief on some of the things we could do. We were at a meeting on Friday, and the students and Yvonne Culver started talking about using Google Hangout to create online meetings, and Ellen's always kicking her butt at technology. There are some things that our, our technology as board members can do that I don't know that we're aware that we're capable of. Could we set something up where we could?
Be our pleasure.
We would love to have just a little bit.
We'd love to show you a lot of good stuff.
Especially when there was a recent update and it showed us all the apps. There are a lot of apps on here now that we have no idea what they are. I mean, we used to just kind of have our little, you know, it had the website, it had our email, and it had our Board Docs. And that's pretty much what we would look at, but now we can see all this stuff, and it's like, well, how much of it would we use as board members if we knew what more of it was? I just, I'm impressed, the students are really amazing, and they, you know, they, they were born with this, basically. They, it's, it's second nature to them, it's like they're, it's like another arm. But with us, we're going to, we will soon be behind them very much, so I would love if we could set that up.
Yeah, we can. I've demonstrated.
What's that?
I'm trying to keep up with it myself.
Yes.
Right?
We do have a few millennials at the table, so they help us a little, but yeah, we're, eventually, we're going to not, we'll be under one.
Wait for the board to give us a time and a date. We'll put together, and maybe in a few Gen I, like it's trying to address, and we'll do it without a problem.
An old millennial. That's a tax moron.
Just wanted to know, who is that man behind the curtain? Because you used to be over the career programs, and next thing I know, this geek comes out of you, and you're doing all this technology and stuff. I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't know you had all that inside you, and you're.
That's why I said there's hundreds of people behind you trying to do this. And that's why, I mean, truthfully, there is no one person that's, it's definitely not me. It's one of the things that, I've been blessed with a great staff, I've been blessed with a lot of wonderful people that understand that we have to try and get this stuff to kids. And I'm smart enough to know that I better either drive or get out of the way, and I'm not ready to get out of the way, so I better stay on top of it.
But you're so, I mean, you're so passionate, and I just love your passion, your energy. I mean, you make me want to just start moving around or something.
Well, I've been moving around.
Just real quick, would you say that Akron is one of the leaders in public schools when it comes to how we approach technology?
That's not one of the leaders, it is the leader.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
It really is. I mean, we are, we are one of one. We are, we do have a, we do have a repurchase cycle already put on the five-year budget cycle, when the five-year budget was approved, the device, continuation of devices, et cetera, is in there. So it's here to stay. I firmly, I hope that it is. I'm not here to stay long, but it must stay long past me, let's say it that way. Yeah, I think we're definitely the leaders in that. And what I really hope to be able to do with the portal is be able to drill it down, not only so that our curriculum people can see it, but my goal is so that the building principal can actually go in and look at it and see, yes, my people are using it every day, my people are using it. That's where I'd like to go, and that's where, I know the port changes hard, it's really hard, and the portal changed to that has really freed up, I believe, given us some opportunity to do that kind of work, so that it's down the building and out there. And what's that? It's all because of you.
Yeah.
I mean, remember, you said that I was in career tech, remember? I got to tell you, I said, no, I don't want to go. He said, oh, yes, you do want to go. So that, that was it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Approval of the meeting minutes for August 13th, 2018, do we have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the meeting minutes and comments, questions or discussions on the meeting. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 43 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are on proper form, and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussions on the, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
The graduation requirements committee from the Ohio Department of Education continues to meet. It should be wrapping up its work, I would imagine, within maybe the next two meetings. There's a meeting next week. I'll be intending that. We're looking at some iterations that are similar to what was proposed last time, but I don't think the legislature will act on anything until they reconvene later in the fall. So I don't know what that means for our, you know, for this year's seniors in terms of graduation, but it is on the radar of the state superintendent and even Senator Peggy Lehner from the Senate Education Committee, who's been attending those meetings. So I'll have more updates as we get closer to a final, some final recommendations from the group and see how that's going to impact our, our seniors. I'll also be sending you an update on some of our partnerships for college and career academies. I know some of you have been interested in, you know, seeing those, so that list continues to grow, and so there'll be more about that soon.
Thank you. I gave my report, treasurer's report.
Couple notes, I want to talk to you about advocacy. As you know, I've been spending a lot of time in Columbus since January, working with a few representatives on the school funding forum. And it's a really a grassroots effort to do so. It's, the two representative, Representative Bob Cupp and John Patterson, reference it as a pure approach. So we have a Republican and a Democrat who are leading this approach, but I wanted to encourage you to be aware of the season that we're in. We're going into an election season. And if David and I were invited, and we attended various meetings last week with two gubernatorial candidates, that was really refreshing. It's very refreshing to be invited on behalf of OSBA, VAS, and OASB to the table to participate, to be asked our opinion as a collective education group. That hasn't happened for some time. And so I think between David, myself, and I know your outreach efforts and the OSBA advocacy network, let's connect with each other, let's take advantage of this opportunity in tying that back to Representative Cupp and Patterson, and giving them all the credibility for making that pure approach to school funding. They have kept numbers out of it so that those numbers wouldn't be politicized. They've really referenced about how we build this network of all party, cross-parties, school boards all across Ohio, and I think you're going to be seeing some larger efforts from them soon. I know that OSBA, VAS, and OASB are also releasing their legislative platforms, so David and I will bring those back to you for your consultation. And I'm just, I'm excited about this season. I think we will have more of a spot at the table than what we've had, and it's a time for us to champion for Akron, and it really is going to be something, I think, important for us. So just wanted to give you that backdrop of the lots of time in Columbus that we've been spending. I think, I think there's some value to it. I think there absolutely is, and just, I mean, hearing both of you talk about the two working groups, it's nice to hear the pendulum maybe swinging back the other way a little bit for a change, and having a little bit more district-level involvement in some of the decisions that are being made. Not that the last couple of state budgets have necessarily been detrimental to us, but getting the input, sort of grassroots, like what you're talking about, and then certainly your input on the graduation requirements, just nice to hear the pendulum maybe at least swinging back the other way for a change, so thanks for all of your work. Thank you.
Committee reports, legal contracts and board policy.
We just have one policy presented for the second of three readings prior to approval, and that's revised new policy 6605 on crowdfunding.
Revised and new.
Yes, if I don't see my handles.
Finance and capital management.
The following is, I'll report, the finance committee summary, August 23rd. Finance Committee of the Board of Education met August 23rd with the following members: President, Tim Miller, myself, David James, Ryan Timbleton. Several guests were present to discuss disability life insurance. Information was reviewed with the highlights below. Disability life insurance. Finance Committee continued the discussion regarding disability life insurance. A proposal from AEA and the local service, Local 1 Service Employees International Union, Ohio Association of Public Employees, shared their consideration. We talked about crowdfunding policy. The Finance Committee reviewed the draft crowdfunding policy that will be presented at a future board meeting. The committee discussed the implications of crowdfunding in relations to the district, and we also had some input from our guests, particularly as it relates to making sure that teachers have the ability to be able to generate funds to take care of their classes, but also for all the safeguards and all those things would be in place. And number three, House Bill 312. The Finance Committee reviewed the update on House Bill regarding the usage of credit cards by school districts. And there's some good and bad and indifference, sort of, this particular legislation sort of ties our hands in some areas, does not give us the kind of freedom that we need to have, and makes it sort of cumbersome as it relates to the treasurer's CFO's office as regards to credit cards. We used to only have one credit card for the whole district. Now we have several credit cards, but the legislation wants us to make sure that there is accountability, and a part of that is to have someone other than the treasurer to sign off on these credit cards, to make sure that there's accountability, like a six-month period, I believe, and after that six-month period, someone other than the treasurer needs to sign off on that. And that's a little cumbersome and provides a problem. We hire the treasurer, the treasurer is bonded, that's the treasurer's responsibility, but somewhere, somebody decided that they wanted to make that a little more difficult. We're going to work around that. We do have personnel here who are able to do that, that are licensed to be able to do that, but that says something about the office of treasurer, in our case CFO, and what their responsibility is, and it is their responsibility to sign off on documents. He's the one that's bonded, he's the one that we hired to do that, but there is, you know, this law that we have to follow. And then the other is, number four, the paper project. A proposal to supply paper to each school was reviewed and discussed, and this is a very interesting conversation. I never realized that there's a lot of jockeying, a lot of bartering as it relates to paper, and how much paper is being used individually by schools, by clusters, and who gets to that copy machine first, and if there are, if there's paper in that copy machine we doesn't belong to, can I take that paper and use it, or all kinds of things. But there's a proposal that's going to be put in play that will hopefully eliminate that, eliminate a lot of wasted paper, a lot of time, save money, a significant amount of money, that's going to be brought. period, I believe, and after that six-month period, someone other than the treasurer needs to sign off on that. And that's a little cumbersome and provides a problem. We hire the treasurer, the treasurer is bonded, that's the treasurer's responsibility, but somewhere, somebody decided that they wanted to make that a little more difficult. We're going to work around that. We do have personnel here who are able to do that, that are licensed to be able to do that, but that says something about the office of treasurer, in our case CFO, and what their responsibility is, and it is their responsibility to sign off on documents. He's the one that's bonded, he's the one that we hired to do that, but there is, you know, this law that we have to follow. And then the other is, number four, the paper project. A proposal to supply paper to each school was reviewed and discussed, and this is a very interesting conversation. I never realized that there's a lot of jockeying, a lot of bartering as it relates to paper, and how much paper is being used individually by schools, by clusters, and who gets to that copy machine first, and if there's paper in that copy machine we doesn't belong to, can I take that paper and use it, or all kinds of things. But there's a proposal that's going to be put in play that will hopefully eliminate that, eliminate a lot of wasted paper, a lot of time, save money, a significant amount of money that's going to be brought to us that deals with paper, and take the stress off of our employees. They don't need to have to worry about paper, or they're going to have enough paper to be able to do the work that they need to do in their individual classes. So we'll be hearing, getting that proposal soon, hopefully correct that. And then the five, board membership. The Finance Committee discussed the advantages of board memberships, being a member of various civic organizations. We've expanded over the years that I've been a board member, and there are many of our board members who sit, who are sitting on other boards, the community wants us to be recognized, they want us to be part of it. We're grateful Mr. Miller's on leadership Akron this term. There are others, Kwanis, other boards in the community, and the discussion dealt with what qualifies a board member to be on that board and for the board, the finance department, to take care of that registration or dues, whatever that is required of a board member. So we'll be looking at that because I know a lot of you want to spread your wings and do a number of things out in the community, and if it's related to public education, then maybe that might be something that we need to, you know, to support financially. We can't support everything, and we discuss that, and some things don't have a direct relationship with what we do as a community, but we are looked upon by those in the community where they want us to be part of their various boards and civic organizations. So I think those were the items that we, you know, discussed that are very good in this meeting, and you'll hear some things in the next, in a little bit about what we discussed.
Great job.
And Robert Walker, item number three, is that bill already signed into law? Or is that still in?
Is it signed into law, or is it just about?
Three, I believe, passed.
Oh, wow, okay.
So we have 90 days.
Gotcha.
To be in compliance.
Correct.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or discussion for Finance Committee? I also love the crosscommittee collaboration and everything going on. It's really, it's really exciting. Okay. Very exciting. Instructional policy and student achievement.
Okay, a little update from the LeBron James Family Foundation and the I Promise School. The I Promise School interim pickup will take place just three short days from now, August the 30th. Already, they're doing interim pickups at the I Promise School. Seems like it just opened. I Promise Two graduation dinner will take place this upcoming October 15th at the Hilton and Fairline at 6:00 p.m., so if someone's interested in attending that. There's a tentative date for the We Are Family reunion for August the 20th in 2019, so you might want to put, save the date on your calendars if you're planning to attend that.
Can you say the I Promise Two graduation date again?
The I Promise Two graduation is October the 15th. At the Fairline Hilton at 6:00 p.m. Got it? Okay. The I Promise Two class starts tonight, and classes will be held at the I Promise School. For another wonderful thing that's going on with our Promise School is Smucker's partner, McClintock Electric, is willing to donate cable and labor for 23 more classroom projectors, and we are currently working out those details. Lisa?
So along those same lines, the foundation's working with the district to continue classroom renovation as well as the media offices, and just as a, we tried, but darn it, the Hamilton Cast was trying to connect, to come down from Cleveland to come to the school, and due to some other obligations, we couldn't quite coordinate that, from what I understand. We had two dates and it fell through, but so close, yet so far, so maybe another time if, you know, I'm sure Hamilton's going to tour for a really long time, people, so hopefully we can get them back in town, you know. There's a lot of reasons why. They're another great example is of you can't be it till you see it, and there are also a wonderful part of having Akron Public School connection with the costumer for the original Broadway cast, having graduated from Boca High School, so it was a nice dream. Oh, and also later in tonight, we're going to talk, we'll be voting on the I Promise agreement with the University of Akron and Stuteen. We discussed that.
Thank you for that. Unfinished business, we have disability life insurance. Turn it over to Mr. Pimbleton.
Actually, what we're going to do is take some of the feedback that we received from Finance Committee, discuss the financial details in executive session, so I'd ask you to postpone that until after executive session.
Will do. All right, we'll move that item down. Under new business, could I do some unfinished?
I want to talk about the.
Oh, yes, sorry. I should have given you.
Yeah, those are. Yeah, I just want to talk about, as the community discussion on our, looking at our students through the lens of behavior, discipline, and safety, as we move through the appreciative inquiry, we have now gotten past discovery, which is, you know, best of, looking at the best of what is, we've gone, we've started the dream, and that's what might be, and we are moving into design on what should be. And we had a meeting a week ago, this past Friday, with the community, and we had a planning meeting this past Friday with our, with our key people to, you know, talk about moving forward, and excited about where the direction we decided to go coming up. We have five key areas that we've been discussing with the community and having us break into different workgroups at the community discussions, and we're going to try to bring in an Akron Public School employee who is sort of a, I guess, expert, for lack of better words, in a program that might be dealing with one of the five areas we've been talking about. And we're also going to reach out to somebody in the community to come in to that same discussion circle who has expertise within one of those same five discussion areas and really start to talk about what we are doing inside the walls, what we're doing outside of the walls, when it relates to our students in those five different areas, and what might be lacking, and where we might have overlaps and gaps and things of that nature, so we can really start to move towards the fourth part of the appreciative inquiry, which is destiny, which is creating what will be. So as we move forward, we've got meetings scheduled through November. That was just sort of an arbitrary date to get a, get a dates on the calendar, a place reserved. We may go past that, we may end there, but I'm still telling people that, you know, we want your participation, and we are going to try to bring some action to what we can actually do as a school system on what the community finds and discovers. So one interesting thing, and I shared this with Lisa, one question that came out at our last meeting with the community, and we discussed a little bit with our committee, we have our portrait of a graduate, and that was designed by the community, but somebody asked, do our students really understand what those characteristics are? And I think one actionable thing we can do coming up is put a group of students together. It may or may not be, yeah, over their committee that Lisa's heading right now, but have them, you know, create their portrait of a graduate, or not necessarily create it, but give a student's definition of those characteristics and what the students meaning for those characteristics are, because they might have absolutely no idea what, you know, one of those characteristics that an adult put together. I know we had, we had teachers and students in that, you know, in those steering committee meetings for the college and career academies, but I think that was mostly driven by the adults in the room, so looking forward to continue the discussion through the school. The attendance will be low, but it's August, I think, I think it'll ramp back up here as we move forward, because everybody I talked to is excited about continuing the session, so.
So that kind of leads up to us, right? So Mr. Bravo and I were able to meet with some of the students, and I really appreciate the questions that Morgan was able to give. They were very similar to the things that Patrick and I both had in our head. We did talk about how the students and even the board is a little afraid to touch the document like it makes it permanent or something, but please, I would encourage the board to go on, this is going to affect you, and it's going to affect future boards, because you will have a commitment part to this in what the students have so far helped us design and what we've designed as a team. So I really would encourage you to take a look at that. Mr. Bravo and I have a plan to try to get together with Dr. Williams Woods because, just to get her input and see how close we are. We are really pushing hard to have students this semester put together into a student's group that creates someone who is sitting at the end of this table, who is a student at every board meeting and attending. Came up with what that might look like on the committee level as well, we came up with what that is going to look like in the school buildings as well. So please take a look at some of the options that we've come up with. I know Patrick was typing in and updating as we were going on Friday. So just stay tuned, but please take a look, because we would love to bring something to start to present to you, and don't want any of it to be a surprise when we bring it, and have the, I'd love to have the students come in to help present that, that have worked so hard with us. And Yvonne Culver has been fantastic as an asset, once we added her to the committee. She not only brings, you know, the job that she has now, but she also puts that teacher hat on and.
She's such a teacher.
She is, and her guidance has been wonderful, so.
Yeah, it really has. And just to add to what Lisa said, it is important, I think, that you look at that because there is a mentorship component, so, you know, as much as this is a student engagement piece, if we're going to interact with the students, we're trying to be thoughtful and intentional about how we do that, and so there's a mentorship component that, you know, there will be a student representative from every one of our schools will be part, everyone, our high schools, sorry, that will be part of a group, and they'll rotate on this board each and every meeting, as Lisa said, but, you know, behind the scenes, you know, we're going to encourage some mentorship between the board members and those students, as well as for them to rotate through our committees and learn about our committees and kind of what we do. So it's very interactive, but it can be very exciting and, I think, very impactful. And the students themselves are, and these are some, you know, engaged students, I mean, we, you know, we, by we, I really mean Lisa, reached out to a lot of these students that have reached out to us, and so these are students who are activists in their own right, but even they have said, you know, whether they're on the committee or whether they're part of that student group or not moving forward, they really want to see engaged, students engaged that are not the students that you would typically see engaged all of the time. We had questions about diversity and inclusion and what those students look like and how much participation they'll have, and, I mean, they're really thoughtful in their participation so far, and it's.
Oh, and they asked for homework.
Yeah.
They said, can we please take this and help you create the form that is an application to, they said, can we be assigned that? Uh, yes. The answer to that is yes, and they wanted homework before school, actually, or school had just started, so.
But even with all of that, too, we're trying to take some of the bureaucracy out this first year, as Lisa said, just get it going and get a group of students in place that can help take it to the next level, but just get, get some students in place by, I think, November.
That's the hope.
So, you know, it may, it's not going to be pretty and perfect the first year, but we're probably famous for taking three years to put something together, so we're just going to put it together and see what sticks, and I hope that group can take it to the next level. So if you get a chance, that document shared, if you haven't looked at it already, look at it, read it, see what you think, throw some thoughts on there, you're not going to mess anything up, just go down to the bottom and just add your comments or whatever you want to put on there.
For call.
Can we get a link to that again? I honestly haven't looked at it. I need a link to this, your document.
It should be in the invite to the meeting, that'll help.
Okay. Or even if you go to jarrettpeople.com and go to share it with me.
I'll try to find it.
Yeah, now, see, that's all boring to me, because how we're at, how we're at, what does that mean?
What language is that?
We'll send it down. All right, we'll get it. Okay. Thank you for that under unfinished business. Anything else for unfinished business? Any new business? We do have the AEA memorandum of understanding for continuing contracts.
Well, can I just introduce it or do we need to discuss it in executive session?
This will be a discussion regarding continuing contract status or commilling notice tenure status for teachers regarding language that existed in the contract that expired in 2016 versus some of the language that we have in the contract that expired in 17, or that we agreed to in 17.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to that discussion. Do we have anything else before we ask for a motion to recess it to executive session?
I did. I have not looked through that, but I didn't know who else got one. I think we all have that. I have not, I have not looked through that. Did Mr. Coleman, this is Peter, if he wanted to give a little something else, so.
The little that he shared with me, I think he shared that, the results of bringing two very different groups of our students together, and how they excelled.
Mr. Coleman, if we can get a chance to look through this and then maybe get you on the agenda for our next meeting, would that be okay?
It'll be fine.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sorry.
Yes. I do apologize for that, but I appreciate your patience, thank you. Pursuant to revised code 121.22 G1 to consider the compensation of a public employer with a school district, and revised section 121.22 G3 to consult legal counsel regarding disputes involving the board and the school district under subject of pending eminent court action, looking for a motion to recess it to executive session. So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion before we recess? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Robert Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?